Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised, these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chambers and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, the City of Grand Terrace on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Tonight will be adjourned in the memory of Roger Barnett. Councilman Allen, you have some words you want to say?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this council meeting will be held and enclosed in honor of Ronald Barnett, a longtime, well-known resident of Grand Terrace area. He actually came here as a young boy in 1947 and lived his entire life in this area, worked, was a career San Bernardino County employee for over 30 years, raised his family here, attended school here, and his family still lives here in this, in our town. And so, so tonight, we will be remembering Ronald Eugene Barnett, who passed away in, on, well, I don't really know for sure, but it was recently, this last month. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Yes, prayers for the family of Ronald, and, you know, I'll be with you guys in time of mourning and comfort. And, you know, you know, as we, there's two things guaranteed, you know, God knows when we take our first breath or we take, when we take our last, but it's always hard to let go of family members. And so just prayers for Ronald and his family. Okay, the invocation will be given by me, and I'll do the pledge allegiance, so please stand. Bow your head, please. Lord, a special prayer for the Barnett's family. God, you know, as you give them comfort, Lord, for their time in need, and just, you know, be with them and love, and they have faith, and they put their trust in you, God. And, you know, Lord, just, you know, just thank you for bringing Ronald into this world and, you know, being part of the Grand Terrace and everything he's done for this city. We are truly blessed. God, I just ask that you be with the council, and you give us wisdom and give us guidance to do what's right in your will, Lord, and you protect our first responders, Lord. And, you know, God, just be with everybody who needs you right now. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Please join me. Put your hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sabino?
Present.
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item A, recording of additionals or removal. Any items on agenda? Do we have any?
Yes, we'd like to pull item number eight and move item number 14 to right after consent.
Nineteen.
Oh, sorry, nineteen. We both got it wrong.
So, you want to pull eight, and you want to remove?
And move nineteen to right after consent. The city clerk will wave frantically when we hit that spot.
Okay. Debra, make sure you remind me, because I forget easy. All right. Public comment. Is this opportunity for members of the public to comment any items not appearing on the regular agenda? Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff if questions arise during the public comment, or may request the matter be agendized for future meetings. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Special presentation. Tonight, special presentation will be Community Coalition for Change: Smoke-Free Outdoor Campaign. So, can we have the spokesperson come on down? You're the next contestant.
Good evening, Mayor Bill Hussey, city council members and city members. My name is Margot Gonzalez, and I am a youth leader and a member of the Community Coalition for Change. I'm here today with my fellow coalition members who are standing up with me. I want to start by thanking Mayor Bill Hussey for inviting us here this evening. I'm here today to share with you all our campaign efforts for smoke-free outdoor spaces that directly impact the health and well-being of our community members in Grand Terrace. Over the next few minutes, I will share an overview and some key highlights from our Smoke-Free Outdoor Grand Terrace campaign. Next slide, please. Who are we? The Coalition, Community Coalition for Change started in July 2010. Our mission is to reduce underage drinking and other drug use through strategies and community actions that will effectively change conditions in our community. Next slide, please. Campaign timeline. This is a quick overview of our Smoke-Free Outdoor Campaign timeline. The following slides will provide more details about our highlights. Coalition assessment. We never want to assume that there is an issue in our community. We want to hear firsthand from community members who eat, work, and play in the community. Our coalition assessment was our first step in gathering testimonies, attitudes, and perceptions to show that there was a need for smoke-free outdoor spaces. The next step was to conduct outdoor cleanups for the quantitative data, that is, the number of cigarettes and marijuana products found in outdoor spaces. The Grand Terrace Coalition held 11 outdoor cleanups at various locations listed on the slide, including bus stops, outside business fronts, and parks. Next slide, please. Data collection/cleanups. Our data found that 100% of the public spaces surveyed had cigarette butts present. 50% of the shopping centers surveyed had at least 450 cigarette butts present. Four out of the 11 public spaces surveyed had no smoking signs posted, but did not contain smoking-related products. Key informed interviews, also known as KI. The coalition conducted four key informed interviews: former mayor of Grand Terrace, Darcy McNamal, Mayor Bill Hussey, city council member Duff Wilson, and city council member Jeff Allen. The key informed interviews were an opportunity to hear from residents of Grand Terrace and get their attitudes and Logo creation. Our coalition used supportive list in creating our campaign logo. The logo is an important part of our campaign because it is used for our postcard collection. The postcards come with data, and we asked Grand Terrace residents who favor a smoke-free outdoor policy to sign them. In total, we have collected 78 signed postcards in English and Spanish since the beginning of our campaign. Grand Terrace walks. The coalition has held 10 smoke-free outdoor Grand Terrace walks. Overall, 92 members of the community were present at our campaign walks. We also had a competition on who would have the highest number of steps. And my sister Evelyn Gonzalez was the winner of the competition, so we could please give her a round of applause? Next slide, please. Forum. The coalition hosted a forum to raise awareness of the importance of smoke-free outdoor spaces. We had a panel of three, including council member Jeff Allen, Grand Terrace High School counselor Ms. Alvedonis, and Ms. Grand Terrace. Roughly 30 people attended the forum. Drafted policy. In two years, the coalition built enough momentum to get a meeting with the city manager to begin drafting a smoke-free outdoor policy. Our goal is for the policy to pass soon. To sum up, here are some key highlights from our campaign. The Community Coalition for Change has hosted 10 Grand Terrace walks, collected 78 signed postcards, held the forum with 30 community members in attendance, and taken more than 112,000 steps since August of 2022. Next slide, please. Contact us. If you want to get involved or learn more about our coalition, please contact us via our contact phone number or email. To follow us on Instagram, please scan the QR code. We post flyers for any upcoming walks or coalition meetings. Anyone is welcome to join. Conclusion. I want to give a special thanks to Mayor Bill Hussey for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you to all city council members for the support, and thank you for all the community who came out today to support us. Thank you.
Well, we probably have some questions for you, council. None?
Yeah.
No? Doug? Jeff? Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you. Grand Terrace is certainly lucky to have you folks taking an interest in our city and wanting to improve our city and the environment in our city. And I can't thank you enough, excuse me, for taking the initiative and doing this for us. Very outstanding citizens. My question to you is, what is going to be the future of your program? What's next?
After we get this policy passed, we will continue the tradition with our program and still participate in bringing awareness to now more cities. So, we plan to expand after we finish our mission, or we complete our mission here in Grand Terrace. We'll most likely expand to other cities to get the message fast, too.
I've come to some of your walk-a-thons over at Rollins Park, and that's, that's good stuff. Are you going to continue to do those?
Yes.
Great. I'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sabino, do you have a question? Okay, well, I have a couple. Don't go away. I didn't know you were keeping track of steps. I threw my log away, so. Anyway, thank you very much for all you're doing and, you know, have done. But how much does a pack of syrages cost nowadays? You guys know? A lot of money, and that's what probably keeps a lot of people from smoking. But, you know, the, growing up, you know, not as old as dirt, but pretty much there, but how much less people are smoking nowadays. You know, it's just, you seen what we grew up with, and then I don't know why people were smoking, because we had third-state smoke alerts anyway, and the air you're breathing was the smoke. But you'd still realize that some people don't, and they still smoke no matter what. And then there's not the education part. Does a school district give education on what happens when you smoke?
Yes. If I'm not mistaken, we have done presentations to different schools to bring awareness to the youth.
But I remember in school, we had that health and science thing. Do they still have that? Like, they show what happens to your lungs and everything when you smoke, and?
Well, we currently don't have that anymore, like, in school, in a regular high school, we don't. But I think it would be a really good idea to bring that back.
Okay. So, what's your goal here?
To have a smoke-free city, so everybody could live in peace.
Okay. So, how do you create a smoke-free city?
So, by getting, like, our community involved and seeing who wants to support us. And when you have the city mayor who supports you and all council members, it's easier that way. And eventually, we'll get there. It'll probably take some time, but we'll make the change.
So, how do you enforce a smoke-free ordinance?
Community. I think it's teamwork who does it.
So, pretty much education and teamwork?
Yes.
So, you don't go out and arrest people? No? Tickets? So, it's pretty much education?
Yes.
Have you guys reached out to Omni-Trans and put your smoke-free posters on the bus stops?
No.
Email me, and I'll give you a point of contact for that. All right?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming out tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your attention.
Did you guys want to get up here and take a picture with the council?
Yeah.
Okay. Council, will you join me?
[inaudible]
Once again, thank you for coming out. I know it seems like a long battle, but never give up on your dreams and your goals, and just keep fighting the good fight. All right. So, now, our next thing is consent calendar. The following consent counters, items are expected to be routine and non-controversy. They'll be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the item of the consent counter. So, so far, we have item eight removed. Any other ones, council? Councilman Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to pull 12, 15, and 17, please.
And I thought we were going to get out of here early. Oh, my goodness. 12, 15, and 17. Seventeen is a, it's on a consent calendar, no?
Seventeen is a public hearing.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah. So, just 12 and 15?
Right.
Okay. So, we have items eight, 12, and 15. So, do I have a motion for one through seven, nine through 11, 13, and 14?
I'll move that.
Second. All right. Second, a motion. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir, and I apologize. Who seconded?
I do.
Mayor Protem. No public comment, and a motion is second. City Attorney, you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. I'm going to ask you all the time now, so I won't mess up.
I appreciate it.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Item eight was removed.
Yeah, item eight, we'll bring back.
Okay, item eight, we'll bring back. Okay, Councilman Allen, item 12?
Just real quick questions. Item 12 is about the code enforcement vehicle, and I wanted to ask the city manager, or the animal control vehicle, will this also be the code enforcement vehicle?
Yes. What we'll, we'll do is the current animal control code enforcement vehicle is the van. We literally have a animal cage in the back of that, so in the same compartment as the driver, the employee, we have animals with all the things wild animals have, and dead animals, and dead skunks, and everything in the compartment. So, it's really not an ideal way to deal with this. So, we will keep that as a code enforcement vehicle, and this is for a purchase of an animal control vehicle truck, and then the true body that has the kennels and the containment systems to be able to do the job correctly.
So, will we have the personnel to staff those two vehicles?
Yes.
Full-time, like, during, okay?
We have one person on full-time.
Okay.
So, depending on what they're doing, they can use the animal vehicle or the code vehicle. We don't plan on disposing of the code vehicle, the current vehicle.
Okay. The, this San Bernardino City Animal Shelter, the deal that's being worked on by the group of cities, is there, will there be a JPA governing body over that?
Not, not as it stands with San Bernardino now. However, there is discussion with multiple cities and city managers to put together at least the beginnings of a JPA, so that there would be a multi-jurisdictional animal control department.
That'd be good. I'm a bit uncomfortable with the way it's described, how the San Bernardino City has so much control over it, and we don't have, we're paying, all the cities are paying this amount, but they don't have enough. I think a JPA would be a wise move, is what I'm trying to say. And so, my next question is, so, are any of the, of the costs associated with us being a part of this recoverable from the pet owners? I know in the staff report, you mentioned that the cost works out to around 140-plus per animal that we take in, that our animal control officer picks up. Are any of those costs recoverable from the pet owner?
So, from the pet owner that's actually recovered, yes. So, there are shelter fees, impoundment fees, whatever, vaccinations, vet work, all of that has to be paid by the pet owner before we release the animal, and they have to get them licensed.
Okay.
And then the remainder of that, it doesn't cover it 100%, but the remainder of that is really why, part of why we have dog licenses, to cover that cost of providing that service. Because what happens a lot is animals that aren't necessarily taken care of as well as they should be tend to be self-selecting for the ones that are at large and running around, and the owners aren't necessarily as good about getting after them and finding them. So, we kind of, there is no recovery for those. So, that's part of the licensing fee.
Okay. So, item 15 is about the storm drain master plan, and on packet page 217, item 3 dot 2, in the schedule, it refers, in, in, discussing the timeline, it says to refer to Exhibit D, and it, and at no place in Exhibit D on page 237, does it ever state a timeline. And in fact, in the entire staff report, there is no timeline on completion of this project. It just says, well, it will be done in a timely manner. And I just, with the amount of money, I think that the contractor should be able to provide some sort of a, even a broad, sort of a broad timeline, maybe not down to the day, but, you know, within a certain number of days. I could give you an example, because in the very next item, on page 239, there is a timeline mentioned for a different item, and it gives 120 to 150-day timeline for completion of that project. And I just thought, well, you know, that would be nice to see for this storm drain master plan, if the contractor could say, okay, for your hundred-and-something thousand-plus dollars that you're giving me, and within six months, I will have you a master plan, or something like that, nine months, or whatever, 30 days, they can do it. I don't know. But it would be nice to know, so that we can hold, hold them accountable, you know, for that money.
So, and I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you. The challenge with the timeline would have to be, six months may not be enough, it may have to be a year, because we really are creating out of whole cloth. There is, there is no basis to begin the work from. This starts from ground zero. So, we could come back and, you know, if you, if you, as part of approval, council requires a timeline, I would suggest something that's six months, nine months, a year. So, there is a cap, that it doesn't run forever, but it's certainly a project of large enough scope that it's not going to be done in three months.
Okay. I mean, well, I would certainly support a, some sort of a, you know, come back in one year, you know, or nine months, or one year, or something, because I was a little, it raised my eyebrows a little bit whenever you included in here the possibility of up to two one-year extensions. And I thought, that could mean more than two years to complete a study, and when will we ever get the work done? You know, that's the thing.
This is a substantial project, and I know the, just the hydrology and the storm drain study for the Gateway Project ran for more than two and a half to three years to accomplish just that engineering review.
Are there any projects that are dependent upon this right now, that are in the works, like the Lewis Gate or the Gateway Project?
Nothing is dependent upon this.
Okay.
So, this is one, if you recall, this is our priority projects list, top of the, top of the list, and this is our first step to pull ourselves up by our bootstraps.
Okay.
So, if, if you choose to put a timeline, like I said, we, we can, we're glad to go forward with a fairly long timeline and bring it back for review or extension, if that, if that makes the call.
Whatever you think is reasonable, I would support that, as long as there is one. I think the attorney wants to keep pointing at me.
If I may. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, Mayor Protem. Yeah, go ahead.
Please. Section 3.4 of the agreement provides that the, the agreement shall continue in force and effect until completion of the services, but not exceeding two years from the date of the agreement. So, we have a two-year plan for it to get done, and then you have the two extensions that you referenced, two one-year extensions thereafter.
So, we're looking at the possibility of up to four years in this contract?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially.
Okay. I think that Mayor Protem, because I have one more thing on number 17.
I echo Councilman Allen's concern. Two years is a ridiculous amount of time for a drainage study. But Q3, my question centers around the idea that who's going to be the checking agency, and are they locked in on the criteria that Q3 uses? Because there's been some controversy over time where the flood control districts don't necessarily agree with the new style, you know, what we call the cutting-edge version of creating a drainage plan versus what used to be, the way they, they did that. So, and I'm assuming that we're going to be able to provide them with enough street information that they will be able to figure their flow correctly, so that we can, you know, it's something that we can have a chain on, so that when we talk to the funding agencies in relation to this stuff, it'll be something they can scientifically depend on.
So, there would be, certainly would be the hydrology studies to look at the flow, not just the volume, but the rate and the speed of the water, because that makes a difference when it gets down there. As far as the review, this would pass through county flood control, although we're not dumping into any of their channels or basins. There is outlet out towards the freeway and into the riverside, across the riverside channel. So, county flood control would weigh in on the final product.
Okay. So, they'd weigh in, but we are the checking agency, then?
We, we would be responsible, and the council would actually be the entity that takes final approval, but there will be, you know, plant check by our engineer, our engineering contractors, and also checked by county flood control. Since they're the guys that do that for, I mean, they're the experts on it, we would want them to weigh in on, beyond our limited scope.
By the nature of the animal, does this mean that we'll also dovetail into the, the water quality situation, so that'll be addressed in the report?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Councilman Allen?
Okay. So, item 17 is the speed survey?
Now, that's, that's the-
Oh, yeah, that's on the, that's right. So, I'm done. Okay. So, I'll move items 12 and 15.
Does the council have any other questions on 12 and 15? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion is second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
And Debra, you want to move to item 19?
Yes.
Okay. So, item 19, new business, historical culture activities, committee appointment. Stephanie Darwin?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. Before you this evening is an application for the Historical and Cultural Committee submitted by Stephanie Darwin, who is also, I believe, a member of the Chamber of Commerce. We have had the, we have several vacancies on the committee at this time. We have five, as a matter of fact. We have one city council as a whole vacancy, and Stephanie's application would apply to this one, where you as a whole would appoint her to this vacant position. Ms. Darwin is here and would like to participate in this group. So, she's here if you'd like to speak with her momentarily, ask her a few questions, and of course, the staff can answer any questions that she may have. So, at this time, the recommendation is that the mayor appoint, subject to the council approval, Ms. Darwin to the Historical and Cultural Committee.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for Ms. Darwin? Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I apologize for being asleep at the switch on the adoption of the consent calendar. I don't have any questions for Ms. Darwin. I support that recommendation submitted by the city clerk. I was just wondering if the city clerk could provide any information to the council as to the two fairly abrupt resignations that we received from two members of the committee that were very effective in their duties while they were on the committee?
Yes. I was contacted by both individuals, and it was through circumstances in their personal lives that required them to take this opportunity to step back. Had nothing to do with the committee. They both still want to participate and volunteer to the extent that they can, but due to these circumstances, that is going to take a lot of their time.
Understood. Thank you.
from two members of the committee that were very effective in their duties while they were on the committee.
Yes, I was contacted by both individuals and it was through circumstances in their personal lives that required them to take this opportunity to step back. Had nothing to do with the committee. They both still want to participate and volunteer to the extent that they can. But due to these circumstances that it's going to take a lot of their time.
Understood. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So our pay wasn't that good for them?
Sadly. You know, these women, they had, they just enjoyed it. They had a lot of fun.
I know. Grand Terrace is blessed to have volunteers and people keep stepping up. And we understand when there's personal things that go on life. And I think they were actually on their term. They did their full two-year term. But yeah, it's a lot. And you know, thank you, Stephanie, for stepping up and wanting to help out and everything. We appreciate it. And anybody else who wants to come out, you know, and come step up to the plate. Not out here, I don't know. We got a new captain. I don't know if he wants to come and be on the historical committee or something. But we really appreciate all the work that you guys do and every, all the volunteers do. So do I have a motion for item 19, appointing Stephanie in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Have a second? Michelle?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion of second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Stephanie. We appreciate it. All right, so now let's go back to item 16, approval of professional services agreements, the revenue costs of specialists for a development impact fee study.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Luis Gardaia, city building official. So tonight, here to present a public hearing for selection of a financial consultant for services. In this case, more specifically to update our development impact fees. This item supports two of our 2030 vision goals, which is goal number one, to ensure our fiscal viability, to commit to a balanced budget and to ensure appropriate cost recovery for services. And number two, which is to maintain public safety by maintaining staff levels for police services remain adequate for our community. So background, City of Grand Terrace, we currently charge a range of fees for services provided to residents and businesses. Fees are imposed as a result of public impact. Such development of residential and non-residential buildings are commonly known as deferred impact fees. So just a very brief summary, so this mainly applies to brand new single, these are one-time fees that are imposed for brand new, single-family, multifamily, residential, non-residential buildings. So for example, if you build a single-family home, you're going to bring in families, right? And then those families will be using our streets, our parks, our streetlights. So in order to actually recoup all those fees, to recoup all those costs, the city needs to collect development impact fees, which again, they're one-time fees. According to the Government Finance Officers Association and the National Advisory Council for State and Local Budgeting, governments should create, should calculate, excuse me, the full cost of the different services they provide and should review and update charges and fees periodically based on factors, including inflation and other cost increases. Last time the development impact fees were updated was back in 2015. So here's a snapshot of the current development impact fees. As you could see, so this is for residential buildings. So there are a total of seven development impact fees. With detached dwelling units, that would mainly apply to single-family homes. And attached dwelling units would apply to multifamily dwellings. So basically, attached dwelling units times however many apartment units or condos or whatever multifamily units is, that's, you know, how you would do the math. Whereas detached is for per each single family unit. Here's the current fee schedule for the non-residential buildings, which would apply to commercial, manufacturing, industrial. As you could see, different than our residential. So in our residential impact fees, they're actually flat-based fees versus square footage base, which is for non-residential buildings. So including this fiscal year was implementation to update the city's DIF, development impact fees as part of the city's budget. In January 2024, the city reached out to three vendors specializing in financial consulting services with the three bids shown below. First bid was from Revenue and Cost Specialist, RCS, for a bid of $39,600. Weldon provided a bid of $69,000 and NBS Financial Services for $60,000. So the selection criteria for the bid award include the following. So quality, strength and completeness of proposal. Bidders' relevant experience, which is very, very important for what we're trying to accomplish here. Qualifications and experience of the individuals assigned to the project. Reference check, proposal pricing, ability of the bidder to complete the project in a timely manner, reputation of the company, and innovative or value-added services. Staff requests that the city council hold a public hearing for selection of a financial consultant services vendor in that it award Revenue and Cost Specialist, RCS, the bid to perform a development impact fee study to update the city's existing impact fees for newly built residential and non-residential buildings. While RCS was the lowest of the three bids, staff feels that RCS approach to the project with the work being performed by two principal financial consultants will result in a better project and will be completed in a timely manner. Also, just to remind council, last year in 2023, we did work with RCS to update our user fees. Other important factors in which RCS is the recommended selection would include that they have more than 40 years in business. The firm's expertise and reputation in having served more than 200 California cities and agencies, including local cities such as Redlands and Loma Linda. An impressive project team with number of years in the industry and a focus on local government revenues. So below is a list of some of the fees that will be, we will be revisiting during this year with RCS. With the fees noted in blue, will actually be new fees that will be considered new. So first fee, first two fees actually would definitely help our public safety. So we would actually impose a law enforcement, facilities, vehicles and equipment fee for basically all new residential and non-residential buildings. Same would apply to fire suppression facilities, vehicles and equipment, which in this case for county fire. Our local traffic circulation system, which is currently in place, would be updated, which includes streets, signals and bridges, regional traffic circulation system, storm drainage collection system, general facilities. So basically maintenance and upkeep of city hall and our city maintenance yard. Public use facilities, including the community and senior center. And one of the new fees that we're looking into is implementing a library facility fee in item collection, which since we do house a, one of the branches of the San Diego County Library, we would use those funds for that. Number nine is basically to maintain the parks, so parkland acquisition and open space and park improvements. And the very last item that we are looking into implementing will be the accessory dwelling unit calculation fee. So this would apply to brand new accessory dwelling units that are built in the city. Safety impacts of the proposed fee study would increase the likelihood to provide additional funding and resources for law enforcement services benefiting the community's policing services. Also additionally, it would increase additional funding and resources for fire protection services benefiting the community's fire services. The economic impacts of the proposed fee will significantly benefit the city's finances by recouping costs associated with providing public services, including maintenance of city parks, street light repair, road maintenance and housing library services, which are managed by the San Diego County Library. Staff recommends the city manager be delegated authority to sign the standard consulting agreement required for this engagement on behalf of the city, subject to city attorney approval as to form. Alternatively, city council may reject the bids and propose agreement. And I am happy to answer any questions, council, and mayor may have.
Counsel, have any questions? Mayor Protem?
The park fee, in the past, it's been considered, I think it's a Quimby fee ordinarily. But is this something over and above this?
No, it's basically the same fee. The park fee is the same fee as was passed in 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Holland?
If it's a county library, why are we charging a fee to support it? If, are they not supporting it?
If the county operates it, we own the building. And these are fees for physical infrastructure.
Oh, to maintain the building itself?
Yeah, just, yes, just like the library here is in our building. Most county libraries are in city-owned buildings and some kind of dollar lease here or something like that because it's important to the city. But so we are responsible to maintaining that physical and providing that physical structure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. So 2015 was the last time we looked at these fees. How can we wait so long to keep, almost a decade again to look at fees? Is this an ongoing practice?
Well, as you could, it's known from last year. So recently, we're actually, basically, we're updating our fees. So like last year, our user fees haven't been updated since 2015, I believe, around the same year. So we're doing basically the same thing. We're just updating fees. As mentioned in the slide, you know, many factors are included such as cost, you know, increase in cost of services as well as inflation, which is basically pretty bad right now.
To answer your question, we should be doing this about every five years and we haven't.
Well, that's my, I was going to ask, I mean, shouldn't we do this more periodically so we don't get the big bang, you know? Because we had a lot of people complaining about that, so we only increased slightly instead of.
Yes, like I said, this should be done about every five years, seven years at the most. And we've just not been as good as we should be at it. We need to be better at it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll open up for a public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Close public hearing. Council deliberates on, so city attorney, you have anything to add for this?
Just as a reminder to the council, as I shared previously via email, there was a court case that just came down a few months back. The Sheets case, which has basically thrown development impact fees into a little bit of chaos in terms of what we can actually adopt as a DIF. So part of the work that'll be included in this consulting agreement is working with the consultant and staff to develop a structure for the DIF that works, that is purely constitutional. There maybe needs to be some tweaks to what was shown on the screen in terms of how that, those numbers are assessed. But that'll be part of the ongoing project.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the city attorney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
So my understanding is this comes under the helm of cost recovery. And the cost recovery just has to be justified a little further in relation, okay.
That is correct. We're going to need to show, I mean, the two standards are, there's a reasonable basis between the fee that we're charging and the impacts being created. But then it also has to be proportional in the amount. So while the study, like the studies that we're going to do, we're going to have to demonstrate a little bit more of a connection between the fee and the impacts.
So a nexus. Then I guess the question then lays in the idea that is there also a comparison necessary in relation to adjacent jurisdictions?
Not typically. So that it's, each jurisdiction's costs are unique to the jurisdiction. There may be similar considerations, but you know, a library, for example, one, it's housed here in the building to where others may have some separate building. So the cost, original cost basis may be different. The police one, you know, we have the annex here now. We actually have a building. Without the annex, we couldn't do a police fee. But we certainly couldn't look at fees like Highland has for, you know, their, whatever it is, Taj Mahal of police stations versus our annex. But at least it's a place to start. So it is dependent on the community.
Thank you.
No further questions, anything else? City clerk, you have anything to add?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to pass this item.
Motion by Councilor Allen?
Ms. Mayor, I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Councilor Henderson?
I support the staff recommendation. I had mentioned or had a conversation with the city manager the last time we went through the process of updating our fees. And I think it's important for, I think this council knows, but when we did the last fee update, there were some fees that had never been updated in the 45-year history of Grand Terrace. And so for whatever reasons, those updates didn't occur. I strongly support the periodic update of our fees for the reasons stated by the Mayor Protem and the mayor. And lastly, I've been involved, well, in my career, about 15 such studies. And the Revenue and Cost Specialist study previously presented to the city council was one of the finest that I've come across. And so I'm an Ducey Essex supporter of the staff recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So you're seconding the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Luis. So item 17, adoption ordinance established speed limits on various street segments based on speed survey. Ms. Tillman?
Should I start over? Good evening, council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst, Public Works. Today, I'll be presenting the findings of our latest Speed Zone survey for the city of Grand Terrace. The last survey was conducted in 2014 and as per the legal requirement, we are required, or we are required to conduct a new survey to ensure our speed limits are appropriate and up to date. The staff report supports the following goal, goal number two, maintain public safety. The last Speed Zone survey was conducted in June of 2014. Legally, we're required to perform surveys every five years to ensure speed limits remain valid and reflect current driving conditions. However, the period can be extended to seven years if sheriff's departments complete a 24-hour radar operator course. The established, the established speed limits enable sheriff's departments to use radar or electric, electronic speed measuring devices legally. The primary purpose of the Speed Zone survey is to ensure that speed limits promote safe and reasonable driving behavior. These surveys help speed limits that reflect the consensus of what is considered safe driving speed by the majority of drivers rather than the judgment of a few individuals. When establishing speed limits, several factors are analyzed. Accident history, roadway conditions, traffic characteristics and land use. This thorough analysis ensures that speed limits are reasonable and tailored to the specific conditions of each road segment. The speed limit is typically established at the nearest five mile per hour increment to the 85th percentile speed. This, this method ensures that speed limits are reflective of the speed at which 85% of the drivers are traveling at or below under free-flowing traffic conditions. Survey locations were carefully selected to ensure accurate data collection. Segments with minimal influence from stop signs, traffic signals and visibility restrictions were chosen along with those having non-congested traffic flow away from intersections and driveways. This helps obtain a clear picture of typical driving speeds. The survey, the surveys were conducted at 21 locations during January and February of 2024. Good weather conditions and off-peak hours on weekdays were ensured to minimize external influences on driving behavior. Radar units were operated from unmarked vehicles to avoid affecting driver behavior. And data was collected from at least 100 vehicles over a period of two hours, excuse me, was collected from at least 100 vehicles or over a period of two hours per segment. During the field review, various factors were considered such as street width, alignment, pedestrian activity, traffic flow, number of lanes, intersections, driveways, traffic control devices, visibility obstructions, land use, and proximity to schools. Pedestrian and bicycle usage and uniformity with existing speed zones were also considered. Any unusual conditions that might not be apparent to the average driver are also taken into account. The data collected at 21 locations helped analyze and set appropriate speed limits. The analysis included considering the 85th percentile speed and ensuring the new speed limits align with the overall safety and traffic flow in these areas. This map represents the 21 segments that were surveyed during the recent Speed Zone Survey. Each segment was carefully selected based on specific criteria to ensure accurate and representative data collection. The segments cover a broad area of the city, providing a comprehensive assessment of various traffic conditions and environments. Based on the survey, we recommend the following speed changes. Barton Road from the West City Limits, I-2, West City Limits to I-215 East should reduce the speed from 45 miles per hour to 40 miles per hour. Main Street from Mount Vernon Avenue to the East Terminus should increase its speed from 25 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. And for the lower table, these recommended speed changes were approved and adopted in June 2014 during the last speed survey, but the signs were never updated to reflect these new limits. As a result, staff will purchase new speed limit signs to reflect the approved changes. The city is proposing to conduct a public hearing to amend Chapter 10.08 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. This amendment will involve repealing and replacing the current speed limits with those recommended in the engineer's report. And this survey provided valuable insight into the current driving patterns and conditions in the city of Grand Terrace. Updating speed limits based on these findings will enhance road safety and ensure that speed limits reflect the consensus of what is considered reasonable and safe. The next steps involve implementing these changes and continuing to monitor and review speed zones regularly. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, have any questions? Councilmember Allen, I know you've been waiting for this one. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for that report, Ms. Tillman.
Thank you.
On page 338 of the staff report, under Business Activity Districts, it says, notwithstanding any other law, a local authority may by ordinance determine and declare a 25 or 20 mile-per-hour prima facie speed limit on a highway contiguous with a business activity district when posted with a sign that indicates the speed limit of 20 or 25. And it has some other criteria with that. So, but my question to you is, does this, would this allow us to do that in our business district on Barton Road to reduce the speed limit based on what this paragraph states?
I'll have to defer to the city manager.
Because it does, on Section 2, it requires that the following conditions also exist, and 2C says that the prima facie speed directly before and after the business district also be 24, 25 miles per hour, which is not the case on Barton Road. So if you're asking, can we call for argument sake from Mount Vernon to the freeway a 25-mile-an-hour zone? We can't because, or Barton between the city limits and Mount Vernon on both sides is faster by the survey than 25 miles an hour. So it does not meet that criteria.
Then on packet page 340, 341, it refers to safety corridors. And it, and again, this, this section of roadway meets the, the criteria for being a safety corridor. It has a live-in health facility, it has a school, and it has a business district on it. And, and so I just, you know, you know, I'm always trying to slow the traffic down right through there because it's just, you know, a little bit anyway. And that's what I'm reaching for, is I'm reading these criteria here and wondering if, you know, if any of this will...
As we did the survey, our goal was to, just the same as yours, not just Barton Road, throughout the city, is to get, keep the speed limit down, to keep it safe and to keep it reasonable. On this specific one, we get hung up on item number three, where there has to be an online tool for adjudicating infraction violations, and there's some statewide survey that has to go in. So our engineers looked at, looked at this, this segment specifically because we wanted to keep Barton Road traffic limits down, and we just couldn't find a hook to hang our hat on. So there were a couple of other segments. We actually did the survey in, in some places a second time because we didn't feel that the first time we did it, we had an adequate representational reading of that. And we even had a couple of segments that we went back and looked at and really looked at things like curves, driveways, trees, other mitigating factors to drive that, the rate down as low as possible. So we've, we've really combed this for everything to keep this rate down. You know, the only, we've really limited it to, the only place where the rate, speed goes up is on Main Street, which makes sense since the last 10 years. There's a high school, there's all times of development, and Main Street is becoming a true, real art, man artery. It's no longer a peripheral street, and so it needs to accommodate that. For the remainder of the city, we've really pushed to keep the limits at where they at, and in one case, to drop them. So we've, we've made every effort possible on that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. City Manager and Ms. Tillman.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have just a couple of questions. Van Buren west to the city limit, the 85th percentile is 38 miles per hour, but the recommendation for the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. And the rationale provided is because it's a residential district. So...
Which segment is that?
We're talking about, I'm sorry, I should have given you a page number, but I did. It's Van Buren west to the city limit. So my question is...
It's segment 20.
Yeah. My question is whether there's a standard speed limit for residential areas in general. It doesn't appear so from the documentation provided. And I'm asking for an explanation as to why this particular residential zone is deserving of a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit when the 85th percentile is 38 miles an hour.
So the, there is a prima facie speed of 25 miles an hour. So that is the, and you'll throw something at me when I'm wrong, but that is the baseline speed. Anything above 25 miles an hour is a, a finding. So lacking any finding, that's the speed limit. And then part of the exceptions, as I was explaining to Councilmember Allen, is that we really look for every possible way to keep these speed limits down. And that segment of Van Buren is something that is primarily residential in nature. There's not a lot of business there. There's, it's, while it's a wide street, and primarily because of flood control purposes, not because of traffic needs, it tends to be a faster street, but it's still in a residential neighborhood where people are backing in and out of driveways. Kids are riding bikes, so it needs to be that treated as a residential segment.
My second question involves, I couldn't find anything on Observation Drive. And for those that are not aware, I'm the ex post facto traffic engineer on Observation Drive due to my daily walks. And the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. And it appears to me that the next time that I see someone going 25 miles an hour on Observation Drive will be the first time that I see someone driving 25 miles an hour on Observation Drive. I don't know that it was studied, but I'm just wondering if there's 85th percentile data on Observation Drive because...
There is, there is not.
No, we did not, we did not study Observation specifically because that falls into the residential neighborhood. And it becomes now an enforcement issue, not a, not a speed posting issue.
Understood, and I appreciate that. I just note for the record that Observation Drive is the easternmost north-south corridor in Grand Terrace, and it is used by Grand Terrace citizens leaving Mount Vernon, going up Van Buren, and hanging it left at Observation, and speeding on across to Palm, or it turns into Paradise, is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and yes, if I was slowed down enough, I could wave to you while you're walking. But we're all guilty of that, and that is something that we as a community need to be aware of. So thank you for bringing that up, and it's something that we need to work on.
Last question. To be clear, law enforcement officers can enforce that 25 mile-an-hour speed limit on Observation for the reasons you previously stated?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I've always been concerned about whether or not ticketing was enforceable based upon the lack of a speed survey.
Ticketing, do you want to handle that one?
Okay. Good question. And now that we have a, a current speed survey of these streets, yeah, we can now more legitimately enforce them. When we didn't have this, this, this current survey citing for speed specifically was very challenging. And typically, it is a requirement by the court that we present a current speed survey to uphold a speed citation, or otherwise it would have been tossed out in court. So we could still cite, but I'm also interested in having those citations be upheld. So now that we have this current speed study, we can hit all of these streets more effectively. We can use our LiDAR units that are available. They can actually laser people on these streets and give very accurate speeds, and we can now uphold them by taking this current speed study to court with us. So we've been waiting for this speed survey to be completed. We have been in the business of, for a while now, of getting our people trained up on the use of that device so they are legally permitted to use it by the courts. And I'm, I'm looking forward to getting those tools out there and actually getting to work on that specifically on Observation because it's come up in the past.
Thank you, Lieutenant Lane, and I'm sure that I speak for the Mayor Protem in hoping to calm traffic on Observation.
Mayor Protem, you have a question?
You know, the rule of thumb, at least the way I've understood in the last 50 years is, is that alleys are 15, residential everywhere is 25 unless posted otherwise, and commercial is 35 unless posted otherwise or justified otherwise. And so the prima facie law actually works backwards because, you know, a lot of people look at the prima facie law as a way to justify, you know, upping the flow of traffic. But it actually is the only way that you can justify anything above what those standards are. And it's, so it works to our advantage. And I guess my, my last thing is, is just a comment. You got the tools, boys.
Yeah, we, we have done some enforcement up there, and unfortunately, the, the sting of those citations being upheld haven't been much of a deterrent. So like I said, I'm looking forward to now getting this into the hands of the deputies, and we can start as we receive complaints or, or specific streets that are, that appear to be problems with the speed. We'll certainly direct our folks to go out and take care of that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
One more question. Thank you, Ms. Tillman, and whoever might answer this. We have a few streets in our city that folks use to bypass the downtown area whenever they're, and to just bypass the city and get on either to Colton or Riverside, whatever. Observation being one of those that you mentioned just earlier. Another one that's used consistently, regularly, and often, and has, and we've had the residents in our meetings here complaining about it, is Grand Terrace Road. And so again, I would draw your attention to the safety corridor paragraphs on page 340, 341. And it says that if a local authority, after completing an engineering traffic survey, finds that the speed limit is still more than is reasonable or safe, the local authority may by ordinance determine and declare a prima facie speed limit that has been reduced an additional five miles per hour for either of the following reasons. Not all, but either. And number one, it's been, the portion of the highway has been designated a safety corridor, or the portion of the highway is adjacent to any land or facility that generates a high concentration of bicyclists, pedestrians, especially those from vulnerable groups such as children and seniors, which we have a senior center, we have a school there, we have walk, people that walk every morning and evening with their dogs along there, that road, people with disabilities that live at the senior center and the unhoused. We have, we can meet the requirements for the Grand Terrace Road, and we could control that a little bit more. Could we not? By, it, right there meets two of the four, and I could read the other two and probably...
Grand Terrace Road is 25 miles an hour. It's in the same bag as Observation. So it'd be, it's now an enforcement issue, not a, a speed limit issue. If you're driving faster on Grand Terrace Road than 25 miles an hour, you will become very good friends with our deputies.
Oh, okay, then, sounds good.
Yeah, we've, we've had conversations specifically about Grand Terrace Road in the past, and we've talked about ideas that we could more visually catch people's attention to slow down delineators and dots and all that kind of thing. I think those are decisions that probably need more flushing out to determine if that's, if it makes sense. But again, it is at, it is at a posted 25, which is a, which is a typical school zone speed area. And I've read that, that exceptions, those exceptions that you just pointed out, I've read those as well. If, if a survey is willing to come in and make a recommendation to change it based on science, and you guys decide to change it, then I'll certainly enforce it. But I'm not going to enforce it any more or less than I, than I will enforce 25. So again, now that we have the survey and we can, we can specifically target our deputies to do proactive enforcement in those areas, that's what we're going to do.
Okay, that's great. And also, I think that his suggestion of the traffic control devices, or I've always been a proponent of those, you know, ways that we can control the traffic speed without having to put a...
Actually, we have two of the radar speed signs that show how fast you're going. We'll be installing Grand Terrace Road here before the end of July. They should be delivered here in the next week or two.
We're just waiting on polls.
So they're sitting here, they should be installed by the end of the month. So we're trying to do some education so if you can see how fast you're going. You know, it's, it's not that our residents are trying to break sound, break the sound barrier or anything, they're just, you know, normal drivers and get kind of carried away on the road or on where they're headed. And if we give them some positive feedback, we can get, help work that out.
Well, you know, so many people use our, the bypass routes, and that's where...
Ms. Speedo?
Thank you for that report, and thank you for answering those questions. I mean, Mount Vernon and Van Buren, the stop signs treated as a suggestion. So I get that for 10 years, we haven't looked at the speed limits, we haven't looked at the areas of concern. And so I, I understand your, both of your concerns, Councilmember Henderson and Allen. Can we, can we expect in five years for the next study to be calendared so that we don't have the, the buildup of frustration, you know, just from residents and community members with regard to the concerns of being able to walk in your neighborhoods, being concerned about children and our seniors?
Yes. So this, just like the development impact fees, our city fees, there are a handful of things that should be done every five years periodically, and they just weren't. And so we're, we're catching those things, we're cleaning them up, and we're, you know, the goal is to have them, have them roll forward the way they're supposed to so that, you know, we're not, we're not in this place again.
Right, and, and I thank you for what you've done to come in to make sure that those things are looked at and to be able to sort of, support our staff to be able to conduct those studies. So thank you.
All right, I have a question. Kind of alarming that we did a traffic survey in 2014 and we didn't put any signs up for that area. I don't know why that happened, but on this traffic survey, are we going to be putting a new speed limit signs? And if we do, we're, what's a ordinance for a speed limit signs on the pole and on the sign indication on the street? Because we do have people that drive from out of town, and I'm sure when the first thing I see the speed limit sign, you know, I don't know... when the first thing I see the speed limit sign, you know, I don't know how fast I was going. I'm sure you guys hear that a lot.
So, we'll certainly get up the ones that we're, we're missing and should have been up for the last decade. As far as the markings on the street, we don't have to have a pole where the street marking is. So, they don't necessarily have to be tied to each other. And it's really up to the city engineer in coordination with the Sheriff's Department on where those, those signs go. I know, you know, everybody would want one in front of their house to make sure people know. But we try and place them as you come onto main streets, as you enter neighborhoods, so they're not, you know, it's not a sign on top of sign. So, and one of the reasons we do the street markings is to keep the number of signs down because it's a visual, it just makes the city look cluttered.
I understand that. You know, just like today, you know, because I had a gentleman write me, and so, I went on, well, Grand Terrace Road to Canal, made a right, and the 25 miles an hour wasn't posted until you hit the residential area. So, every time, well, back in my day, when I got a ticket, you know, you could be doing 30, and also you do 25, and you didn't, you know, if you're still doing 30 past that sign, you got the ticket for 30. So, shouldn't we have these signs at least on each of the intersections for the beginning? So, when they do see it or have it at least a little bit more visible? Because like I said, there's a lot of people that come through this city, and they might not know. I know we don't want a whole clutter of signs at every 100 feet, but at least on the road or something. Because there wasn't anything on that road until you got all the way down by Newport.
So, we can look at those as, as one, you know, we can look at the signs where they're at. And like I said, in coordination with the city engineer and the sheriffs on what makes sense, we'll do that.
Yeah. And if I could just add to that real quickly, I think in some respects where the, where the idea may be the more is merrier, you know, if we have signs every 100 yards or whatever, then it's just a constant reminder. It is a visual distraction. It does create clutter and all that kind of stuff. Technically speaking, though, all we really need is one sign at the beginning of the roadway where people enter that road, and they're on notice. Whether they see the sign or not, they must know that that's the speed limit. That's, that's one of the inherent responsibilities of driving is ignorance is not an excuse. If you have signs posted more frequently that you can point back to that sign back there that you just passed 30 feet ago, that's great as opposed to half a mile ago. Yeah, I think, I think there's probably some merit to that, but it's not necessary for us to still continue to enforce, you know, the posted speed limit as it is. I think in some of my research that I've done and past reports here to, to the council with regards to the traffic enforcement, I would say a significant majority of the people that we cite are not city residents, obviously. And it's, I'm sure they're happy to hear that. We're equal opportunity ticket givers, though. I mean, we don't, we have no idea who we're pulling over when we pull them over, but we are finding that, that a large majority of people are coming from out of the area. So, if we can strategically place those signs that catch those folks' attention in those, you know, shortcuts and whatnot that they're taking, and it makes sense, and, you know, it falls within, you know, the city's guidelines or whatever, then again, we're just going to go out there and, and do our job and maintain, maintain the, the most reasonable, slowest speed that we possibly can.
So, is it all right that I order a spike strip on Amazon for in front of my house?
You can do whatever you like, sir.
Because I know they go past 25 miles an hour to go to Observation because I got to pick up speed going uphill to get up there, so.
Yeah. And we'll deal with the fallout later. We'll have another conversation.
That was just my question, because some, there's some, you know, just a, not a sign every 30 feet or 100 feet, you know, at least in the beginning.
Right.
You know, at the end. So, and yeah, ignorance is, you know, they, yeah, they, they know. But just, just so some people, hey, it's, there's your sign. It's posted.
Sure. There's your sign.
It's back there. And I don't know if they could argue that on a ticket or what. And I know, especially when school starts, that's our biggest traffic headache.
Sure.
Most of those people drop off their kids or doing 100 miles an hour to get there. And that's, that's always been a headache.
Well, and, and based on those complaints, we have targeted enforcement specifically at Grand, is it Terrace Hills Elementary there during school time hours, and have actually found nobody speeding. So, it, it's not that, that we're ignorant or avoiding those areas. Obviously, we have to go where we're, maybe we, we receive information that things are happening. But we, we have been there, and we, we haven't actually witnessed a lot of speeding during the, during that school time. There's a much larger problem at the middle school with people making that left turn into that parking lot there, and we've, we've written some tickets for that, too. So, we're happy to go wherever the business takes us.
Okay, great. So, another question's a public comment. Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
No? Did you have another question? This is Councilman Speedo. So, no public comment? We'll close that. Deliberation. City Attorney, you have something that you have to?
Not yet. Once the motion and the second is read, I will read the title of the ordinance.
So, the council have any other comments? No? Do I have a motion for this ordinance? In a second.
I'll move.
I'll make a second.
See, motion by Councilwoman Savino, second by Councilman Allen. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, staff has provided a red line version of the ordinance. What council is introducing tonight is the ordinance with all those revisions incorporated. And we will be placing the final version of the ordinance at the second reading. So, with that, the title ordinance of this follows, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, State of California, repealing and replacing Chapter 10.08, speed limits of Title 10, vehicles and traffic of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code in its entirety, and establishing speed limits for city streets." Adam City Clerk? Maybe I'll vote.
Okay. So, please vote.
I'm sorry. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Tillman. We appreciate. Okay, item F, unfinished business. Adoption of fiscal year 2024, 2025 proposed budget. Department of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So, before you is the proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. And these are the 2030 visions and goals that it supports. And so, for the City of Grand Terrace, the general fund revenues are projected to be $8.2 million. And the expenditures are very similar, again, $8.2 million. And we have a projected surplus of around $38,000. Based on HDL's projection, which is our consultant, they're projecting sales tax at $1.3 million. HDL, again, for our property taxes, projecting it to be $3.2 million. And with the VLF swap, $1.7 million for fiscal 2425. And these are slight increases over the current fiscal.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Could you explain for the audience, VLF?
Conrad, I apologize. I don't remember what it stands for.
It's the vehicle licensing fee. So, when you pay your, your registration, we get a portion of that for, it's primarily dedicated towards streets, traffic control, and those type of things. So, it's, it's what we get out of registration.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that the audience understood the acronym.
Yeah, we, we get a piece, we get a piece of your registration every year. Yeah.
Thank you.
On to our general fund. So, these are general fund revenues. You can see, starting on the left side, it's the 2223 adjusted budget, 2223 actuals, 2324 adjusted budget, our projected 2324 year end, and then our proposed budget for 2425. And again, you can see at the bottom, $8.2 million for 2425. And this is just a graph to show you where the bulk of our money comes from, and that is property taxes. General fund expenditures, again, the same format. And again, you can see that our proposed budget expenditures are $8.2 million. And this is a bar graph showing the expenditures for everybody to see. And then before you is deliberations and hopefully adoption. Are there any questions?
Council, any questions? No? All right. Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Do I have, the City Attorney, you have anything to say? I just saw you move up to the microphone. I'll make sure you, like you're all ready to earn your pay or something. I don't know.
He was going to contribute. Offered to contribute.
Do we have his budget up there, too? All right. Do we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the budget?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, comment? Councilman Henderson?
I wanted to compliment the City Manager and the Director of Finance for the proposed budget. Those of us who've been around for a while appreciate the fact that the city was under significant stress for a number of years once the redevelopment program was removed by the state legislature. And so, at least in my view and my experience, it appears to me that the general fund budget is in its best condition since the elimination of the redevelopment program. A lot of people deserve credit for that, prior councils, current council members. But I, I think the effort put forth by staff over the last several years have been significant, and it's reflected in the positivity associated with this particular budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's a great comment. Thank you, Councilman Henderson. And you're right, you know, it's, is definitely a, a work from coming out of the dark ages and working the way up. And, you know, thank God it turned out the way it did, and, you know, city staff and council members, you know, rolling up their sleeves, and the residents, too, coming together for this. And so, just, you know, we got to keep going. We're pretty, we're still a conservative council, and, you know, we do count every penny. And we do tell you where all the money is being spent. So, anybody else, any comments? No? So, do I have a motion and a second?
So, move.
Second.
Say, motion by Councilman Henderson, second by Councilman Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine, for the keeping us in check and balancing our budget and making sure we don't have any bounced checks. Thank you very much. So, item 20, future agenda items request, discussion of whether to consider holding a voters' educational session and the community members of Grand Terrace. Who was this? Councilman Allen?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council. Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. This is future agenda items request, discussion on whether to consider holding a voter education workshop for the members of the community. Staff report supports goal number five, proactive communication. With respect to future agenda items, City Council has policy that if a council member requests that a task or project be propped back, that it is submitted to the City Manager, and the City Manager will agendize, shall be agendized at a future meeting to ask the City Council if time should be spent in preparing a report on the proposed item, and that's one hour's worth of time or more. At the regular meeting of the City Council at April 23, Councilmember Allen requested a future agenda items request to bring back for a discussion, a voter education session for the community members of Grand Terrace. Therefore, at this time, is requested that City Council discuss whether staff should bring back and opt, options on a voter education workshop as well as a date certain. That is my staff report, and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Council, any questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, I know that Councilman Allen, when he made this motion, that he had something in mind. So, I'd like to get a, at least a basic description on how he sees this proceeding.
Okay. Councilman Allen, you want to explain?
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. So, when I originally proposed this, I had some concerns about the titles and names that had been given to some of the ballot measures that were popping up on the November ballot. And in particular, the, the ballot measure that the California Business Roundtable had proposed that went before the California Supreme Court. That was my, my biggest concern because it had such a deceptive name to it, and I wanted our, our residents and anybody interested to understand how, what happens when these ballot measures get named, and how important it is to, to know what the, is the meat and the potatoes of the, the measure. Now, of course, we know now that the California Supreme Court will not allow that item to be on the ballot in November. However, there are quite a few other ballot measures, propositions, that are going to be on the, on the ballot. And we have a local ballot measure here that we're, that is going to be on the ballot for the sales and usage tax increase. And I think that there are a lot of residents who have, would have questions and would like to have some information about the need for that. And so, that's what I was hoping that, I wouldn't want it, it is absolutely not a, like a, one of those debatable back and forth. It's strictly educational, strictly an educational type of an event. And the right people to answer the questions would be important, you know? It could be a league representative or, you know, someone like, who's very knowledgeable on both sides of the ballot issue, you know?
Now, are you going, what are we going to read it to them? Or, because that'd be the best way they could understand it. But do you see it as an open forum, or what, how do you envision it?
I think so, yeah. I think so, that it would be. I mean, whoever the presenter would want to be, and if they happen to have visuals, they could bring them or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Savino?
There are a number of state ballot measures and initiatives that are very polarizing and partisan. And so, how will you, what do you envision in ensuring that those who are chosen to come in to make those presentations, that it's fair and that it's even, and that in, in creating or in your design, that it doesn't lean a certain way to, to provide any influence? I, I mean, with so many of them being polarizing, I, I think that we need to keep it to local issues, and that the voters, if they are concerned with something that's happening at a state level, and that it doesn't directly impact our ability to legislate from this dais, that it should remain with our own measures. That, that's my comment.
I think it's pretty easy to have an educational forum without becoming partisan. I mean, a prime example would be our attorney to your left right there. He's able to explain both sides of any issue right here, and you never see him giving any sort of a, his personal or his, you know, it's always very professional. I think that, that's doable, and it's possible if, if it's something that, you know, that the council feels like, the rest of the council feels like the community might be interested in having, you know? I'm just throwing it out there because, you know, we have so much on the, so many confusing things that are on the ballot. And I always try to read every ballot measure, every little nuance that I get in the mail from the state, the, the, the voting information stuff. But sometimes it's not exactly clear to the layperson that, you know, and a little discussion might, might open the eyes. I don't know.
There are several special interests as well who put out educational material on some of those items as well. And so, again, it, it's my stance and my position that, again, those items can be polarizing. I, I think that those who are concerned or who are unsure of how to read those items, again, that they, that they create those, that they create that dialogue with those parties without the city becoming involved because they are so polarizing.
Okay. Do we have any public comment for this one?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Bringing back for deliberation. Any comments? Councilman Henderson?
I share some of the concerns articulated by my colleagues. I share some of the concerns articulated by my colleagues. It, I think, somewhat difficult to provide the objective, unvarnished truth, depending on your definition of truth, that Councilmember Allen has indicated is the impetus behind his request. I just don't know how it could be pulled off successfully without the potential for the educational workshop to devolve into he said, she said, discussion of various items and initiatives that are on the November ballot. I'm not opposed to the... Conceptually, but I think there would need to be a more definitive approach on how to deal with this and how to ensure just objectivity without the partisanship, without the polarizing comments, where Mayor Pro Tem Wilson makes a comment, and I stand up and respond to his comment, and then he responds to my comment, and it goes back and forth. And there's also the potential, I think, to throw a party and no one show up. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilman Allen, comment?
So, I can certainly appreciate both of your concerns and understand how you could feel that way. I think it's a... I don't know, I don't wanna say sad or disappointed, I'm kind of... I kinda wish it wouldn't have to be that way, that you wouldn't feel that way. I wish you would have faith and trust in the audience, that they wouldn't turn that way, that we could hold an event like this, and that it wouldn't devolve into what, as you described, the he said, she said, et cetera, and a partisan event. But sadly, in fact, that may in fact be the way, and that's why it's good that we have in this discussion, and maybe we flesh that out and realize that it wouldn't be too practical to do something like this, you know? And just everyone will just rely on everyone to read their ballot book and vote their mind and their heart, and, you know, if they wanna discuss it, they can contact us individually, I guess. That's what... Every time I go out in public, somebody... That's all people wanna talk about, you know? Because they know you're a politician, so they think, "Oh, hey, let's talk about the..." This or that one, you know? So, that's why I threw that out there. But, you know, if you think it's gonna devolve into something that would require overtime for our law enforcement, well, I'm not supportive of that either.
Councilwoman Sabino?
I don't lack faith in our residents or our constituents. I come from a place of ensuring that we here maintain our neutrality, and that any perception of holding such an event would change the perception of our position and who we represent, and how we represent everyone in Grand Terrace, rather than just certain demographics. And so, it is my... Again, it's my concern that we maintain our neutrality, and that we, for lack of better words, stay in our lane. And I have full faith, again, in our residents and that they will vote their values.
I appreciate your... What you're saying there, I think that the council members themselves should be the ones who can... Could be able to hold an event like this and stay neutral. I don't, you know, if you're thinking that we're the ones who are gonna end up becoming partisan, I would disagree with that. I think that we can... We have enough experience to do something like that. But then again, the... It does seem like, you know, perhaps discussing things of issues that are outside of Grand Terrace's interest, in other words, at the county or state level, must not be... Maybe you don't feel like it's important. I mean, they do affect us. All those state ballots, all those county measures, they will have an effect on us, so it's important for people to know what they're voting for. But, you know, that's what the books are for. We just have to encourage folks to read their books and know what the ballots are all about.
Okay, I got a lot of comments. So, the League of Cities, one of the things that they do, the League of Cities, is to educate council members and staff on pending ballots that's gonna hurt the cities. It's gonna implement everything on the cities. I'm like where you were talking about, that thing that the Supreme Court took over. So, they educate us. Our job is to educate the public when they have. We have a council member communications here, and, you know, this pretty much gives you free rein if you wanna discuss something but not go into total detail, but you could say, "Hey, this is what I got on the League of Cities, and this is what they're not going." Because when I send it... When they send me the message out, and I send it to the council members, it's you guys could approve or not approve. We are right about, you know, because let's go back to the no means yes vote on the gas tax. What's really going on around here? It's the lawmakers manipulating the wordage to get the vote across. So, it's up to the individuals to read. Now, I do have people come up and ask me, "How are you gonna vote? What are you gonna vote on?" And stuff. And I say, "Well, don't get mad at me, I'm gonna tell you why I'm gonna vote, I have nothing to hide." But it's education, education. Now, we have a ballot initiative coming up, and I'm sure our staff is gonna have an educational workshop for our own ballot initiative, that we are gonna put money aside for our own lawyers to come out there. If we do this for every ballot on the thing, I think Adrian will like it, because their company would be rich, right? You know, because we'll be using you for... And we have to... We're nonpartisan. We do look at stuff, and we do vote on things, and you know, a lot of us, we vote on the person, a lot of us vote on just the party, you know, but we come to a conclusion, we vote what's best for the city. That's our main focus in life on the city council. What's good for every resident, and what's good to keep the city going. And we have a ballot on there, just like, example, the transient tax thing, and John Gollum said, "Hey, you better change the wordage, they're gonna think we have homeless people up here." Sure as heck, they thought we were voting for a homeless tax, you know, and all it was was for, you know, a hotel... I don't know when the hotel's coming, but a hotel tax. So, there is education, it's, you know, you could have, you know, as a council member, you can make arrangements to meet with people up there in, you know, in the conference room. You can do that, but to put staff hours and city attorneys and everybody else, I don't think that's just for a cause for this. Now, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Allen, and I agree. And unfortunately, people don't read. They get manipulated on the commercials, or they get manipulated on the one-party thing instead of looking at what the thing's about. And unfortunately, lawmakers manipulate the wordage. So, you know, thank you, I know what you're trying to do, and I appreciate it, but I think we're stepping into something that we don't wanna step into, we wanna just stay in our own lane, like Councilwoman Sabino said, you know, and we need to focus on our own education for our own initiative that's coming up on there. Because Facebook, you're not gonna get it from Facebook. And I won't get on Facebook for the ballot that's coming up, because I might as well just talk down blue in the face, because you are gonna get the naysayers. And if you look at it, the naysayers don't even live in the state, you know? And I don't know why you move out of the state, why are you on the Facebook for here? I have no idea. But, you know, you're welcome to stay there. But people are staying here in Grand Terrace, people wanted this initiative for enhanced law enforcement, people... We had a committee for the fairest way action, sales tax, it's gonna tap on everybody else. So, alls we could do is just educate. We can't tell people, "Go out there and vote for it," or "Not vote for it," because then we're stepping out of bounds, just like we can't tell them who to vote for president, who to vote for vice president. They could ask us what we did, we could tell them, or what this initiative means. So, I think... I don't see this going any further, but you said, you know, you're happy pulling this?
Yeah, but you just mentioned yourself, you said, just now, you said, "I think that..." Or you said you feel like the staff is going to have some sort of a... Something for our own initiative that we're putting on the ballot, right? Because that was...
Yeah, this...
That was the motivation I had, was not just on this Taxpayer Deception Act, but I also wanted our residents to understand about this, and everything about this initiative, and, you know, like why it's going on the general fund and not in a special, you know, fund.
And as it gets closer, you know, because we'll bring back the committee to, you know, they're the ones, you know, if you read the chair, Jessica Brown, you know, the insight on that, the city manager, the city attorney, so we could push our own initiative for the residents of this city to help them. I think, you know, and we're... We're not selling, but we're educating. We're educating what they're gonna get, and that's the biggest thing, because I know California voters are apprehensive of voting on a tax, because we've been taxed so much, but, you know, this is a thing for a resource. Now, why are we bringing this in there? I'll say this, because what our state legislations have done to our law enforcement, and it's up to the city council to make sure that we're home, we're safe, and protect our residents. That's the main reason why we're here for that tax. So, if you wanna just pull it, we could just have this dead right now.
So, well, I don't... It doesn't need to advance, it was just an idea I had, I just wanted to discuss it, and this is the way to do it.
Okay. No, I appreciate the discussion. City manager, you have anything to add to that?
No, stand in my lane.
All right. Just make sure you do 25 miles an hour. We have a public comment?
Johan Gallo, please.
Do we, don't we? No? Okay.
And I will make it breathe.
Promises.
Good evening, Mayor Hesse and the council. I think the important thing goes back to the early comment that Councilmember Sabino mentioned, is if we stay within the issues within our county, within our city, and educate our residents on what's important for our community, that's about the best we can do. You know, the people that are making the most money during the election years are the printing companies, the advertising companies, they love that time of year, because it's spin, 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 it's the business they're in. What voters are starting to realize is Prop 47, they were lied to, Prop 57, they were lied to, Prop 1, they were lied to. All of these issues that have come forth before the voters, they're starting to get smarter about the spin that's out there. And so, to that point, I think if we focus on what we learned when Lieutenant Wolf had the special community workshop, when we were pushing seven years ago to get more law enforcement in our city, that room was packed over at Azure Hills. Why? Because it was about our community. I think if we focus on this initiative that the law enforcement community and all of the committee worked on, on what's important for our community, to get more resources for our community, I think we'd be further ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gollum. And one final comment, and one piece of advice. If somebody's not for something that you're trying to work on, just leave it there. There's no use arguing, because they already got their mind made up, and they just wanna argue. Our goal is positive reinforcement and the correct information going out. So, it's not worth talking to somebody who's already got a mindset. So, on that one, what do we do, city attorney? Just close it?
Correct. If there's no motion, then we just move forward.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilman Allen, for bringing it up for discussion as needed. Okay, item eight, future agenda items, at this time, do we have any requests? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like the council to consider establishing a legislative advocacy program for the city. The primary purpose would be to identify funding sources at the state and federal level for the council's adopted priorities, to build relationships with the funding agencies, and more particularly, the staff of the funding agencies, and also to analyze bills at the state level that would have a negative... Not a negative, but a direct impact on the... On the city of Grand Terrace. I appreciate the fact that CalCities provides information to its member cities regarding proposed legislation, but in my experience, particularly for a small community like Grand Terrace, we kinda get lost in the shuffle at the CalCities level, and there are a number of pieces of legislation routinely that come down that have a direct impact on cities like Grand Terrace. And occasionally, but not often, there may be legislative analysis at the local level that conflicts with the legislative analysis of CalCities. So, it's something that I think we've needed for quite some time, but particularly as it relates to funding our priorities. All of us have been to conferences and sessions where we see our competitor cities, the city manager and council members addressing the funding agencies and being very, very successful. And I think that it's something that a city the age of Grand Terrace, and particularly the size of Grand Terrace, should have been doing almost from the inception, because those relationships are so important in funding decisions. So, I'm hopeful that the council will consider this and ask the city manager for appropriate report, analysis, staff. And I'm not suggesting a new staff position, but I am suggesting that the city manager evaluate which staff person would be best assigned to this activity, this function. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a first. Councilman Henderson, what was your title again? Councilman Anderson, vote.
Excuse me, Legislative Advocacy Program.
Legislative Advocacy Program, and I was second by Councilwoman Sabino, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Oh, and I forgot to ask, my future agenda, can we turn the air conditioning on sooner, you know, instead of later here? Because, you know...
So, for the record, Luis Guardia will be responsible for making sure that the council chamber is set at appropriate temperature.
I'd rather have hot chocolate up here than the olive. Okay. All right. City Council Communications, Councilwoman Sabino, you have anything you would like to say?
I've said a lot this evening. I just wanted to reiterate that if you haven't been to Loud Burger, go. Just the ambiance is amazing, the... It's just fantastic inside. Not only did I go after our last council meeting, I went again on Saturday, and so, I'm gonna need a whole new wardrobe if I keep eating there. It's just beautiful, and I like supporting locals, so there's that. We also... Many of us attended the chamber meeting over at Get Loaded and Get Loaded Guns and Ammo, sorry. And so, there was such a great turnout. Conrad, thank you for coming in, doing the presentation, making yourself accessible to the local businesses. I know everybody appreciated you being there and being able to have that conversation with everyone. And I think that... And then we attended League of Cities, and I, you know, I reiterate your same sentiments, that we're just scratching the surface with the legislation that's coming through, through the organization, and I'm happy to partner on that, because all I do is read that stuff for fun, so, however, I can help. There you go.
That's it. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to compliment Lieutenant Lane and his staff regarding the sheriff's substation. It's a wonderful addition to the community, lots of work when involved, and I'll echo the city manager's comments that if you don't succeed as a law enforcement officer, you have a career as an interior designer. Thank you, sir, for that. The substation celebration was excellent, even if it was a little warm. I attended the CalCities Division Meeting, the Inland Empire Division Meeting, along with Councilmember Sabino and my other colleagues, and it's always an excellent venue to network with neighboring cities to find out what's going on and what kind of challenges that we face as a community. So, our membership there is valuable on multiple levels. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
So, yeah, thanks, Mayor. The chamber meeting where we at Get Loaded, where we celebrated Get Loaded being the business of the month, and the chamber meeting was so well-attended, because Conrad, you know, because city manager was there, talking about... I wish, though, that it had been a longer meeting, or you'd had more time, because there was so much that didn't get discussed, you know, about future development, and about the things that are gonna be happening right down... the, the things that are going to be happening right down the road and the, and when we, I know we ran out of time. You just didn't get to it, but it would have been great if you could have been able to, maybe you can come back at another one and you can talk about the future of Grand Terrace and, and, and the future developments. So, uh, after that though, I'm, I don't know if any of you other, uh, my colleagues went, but I went to the ribbon cutting at the county fire headquarters, saw the fire chief there. You have a nice, nice headquarters building now. Congratulations on that. Uh, that was, that was, um, a, a really great business, uh, business deal the county made there in that private-public partnership and getting that nice headquarters. So congratulations on that. I, I enjoyed that tour too. It was nice. Um, and then, uh, of course, the CalCities luncheon that I attended also with you guys was, uh, pretty informative. That was good too. So that's what I did.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, to state how much I appreciate the cohesive nature of our, of our council and staff. Uh, and I, I believe that you can draw a line straight to the leadership of the city manager and the mayor and the way they work so well together. Uh, they're in the past, you know, I've been around here for 45 years and so there's a lot of comparison to make. But when you've got the top, you know, uh, talking to each other, it sure makes a big difference. And I, and I greatly appreciate being able to work with all of you.
Amen.
Well, thank you. Um, I don't know who talks. I don't know, Conrad listens sometimes, but he does. But yeah, echo, uh, Councilman Allen's thing, you know, it was a great turnout and, and everybody was pleased with our city manager. They all liked him. I don't know. I thought maybe everybody had something in their coffee, but you know, they, he seemed to be doing a really good job. But you're right, Councilman Allen. And the public needs to know what's going on here. They need to know, you know, hey, what is the city doing? There's a lot in the works that's going on in the city that they don't know. And a lot of behind things and things that are, you know, voted on for the future and, you know, what the council goes and the planning commission. So it's definitely a team effort. So I appreciate everybody on this council and our city staff. Um, but I wanted to say one thing. I wasn't here for that one meeting because I, I was in South Carolina, but I want to thank the council. And I would have voted for it too. And I want, and just to tell you, it would have been a five-zero vote for that, uh, upcoming sales tax. Because, you know, it's not like I was trying to hide, but I appreciate the council and the mayor Proton running the meeting. So, um, that's definitely, uh, a thing that everybody in the council wants and we want it for our sheriffs. And yeah, the, the fire department, really nice building. I think our, they got a better deal on our building. But, um, I mean, you have sprink, you have the sprinkler system works in the rainstorm. So, you know, there's no fires during the wet weather. But really nice building. Uh, and I, I'm sure Councilman Allen remembers, you know, when, every time I drive to that area, I always think of Norton Air Force Base and there was Burger King and all the, the buildings and stuff. But yeah, the, the county made a really good deal on that. And it's nice to see that building full again and, and everything. Um, now, if the sheriffs just had a big budget like that, they'd be all right. You know, I, I don't know what's going on around here. But anyway, but you know, congratulations on the building. So let's talk about what's coming up. Fourth of July. So happy independence for everybody coming. There's going to be illegal fireworks. I'm sure of it, like every year. The sheriffs can only catch so many and it has to be seen. Just be ready. Make sure your pets are taken care of. Make sure they have their license. Make sure they has, you know, some kind of identification because pets, they do get scared. Um, but most important, have fun and celebrate. Do it in a safe manner. Support our local fireworks booth here with all our, um, youth programs. But remember, most of the fires happen, they're from the safe and sane. When you are out there on the street and you're lighting your fireworks on a designated spot, you know, have that bucket of water. Keep that bucket of water with the fireworks out on the street at least overnight. I know you're probably doing like a initiative and putting it in the trash can. Then what do we do? We put our trash can on the side of the house. That's what is usually smoulders and, or we get the house on fire. So please be careful. Please have a great time celebrating our independence. And, um, me and the city manager, we did, did a little drive around Grand Terrace. Not a drive-by, a drive around. But we did notice there's a lot of stuff that people in this city need to take care of. Um, it's called pride. Now, I know some of you probably can't do it, but most of you can. And that's pride of your homeownership. And at least mow the weeds, you know? One house can ruin a whole neighborhood. Or if that house, if that person's elderly or handicapped, neighbors work with neighbors. Help that person out. Mow their house. Mow, not mow their house, but mow their yard. You want to mow down their house, we'll get in trouble there. But, you know, take care of them if they can't do that, you know, because that's what Grand Terrace is made of, you know, a bunch of people helping each other. But please, people, take better care of yourself because I get more calls about neighbors fighting with neighbors because somebody's not doing stuff. Just talk to each other in a civil manner. We're all humans here. And then take care of it. We, and one other thing that really gets me, we do not forget about any part of this city. We don't look at one side and worry about that and forget about the other side. Grand Terrace as a whole, we take care of the whole city. We drove around and the city manager, we were talking about the city limits and it's just crazy, the boundary lines. He was telling, it's just, I don't understand what our forefathers or fore, residents did. It, I think it was, I live here and I don't want that and I do this and, you know. But just take care of your neighborhood. Help each other out if that person can't do it. You know, it's always nice to help people and just, you know, be good neighbors. And, you know, it's, um, and landlords. Landlords, make sure that you are good landlords and, and, you know, keep up with your rental property because you are making money. And when you send code out there, I think we should start finding the landlords every time code has to go out there for. Because, uh, our code has other things to do besides be your, um, management company. All right? And businesses, if you have a, a business in your s, um, home, make sure it's licensed. If you have a car repair business, it's illegal. It's illegal to work on other automobiles for a profit. That's California law. That's bypassing the city ordinance. You can't do that. There's environmental concerns and you can't keep parked cars on the street for your, your car business. Cars can be parked for 72 hours, but it's not there to conduct your business so you don't have to get it your own personal garage. So, uh, be cognizant of your neighbors. If you want to open a business, by all means, open a business, but don't do it in your neighborhood, working on cars. And that's all I have. Uh, city manager, you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, thank you for your generous comments. And I, I know they came to the chamber of commerce just for my boyish good looks. But, um, you know, to, to build on what the mayor said, this, this is a great community. And we've seen a lot of change in the last couple of years for the positive. The community's heading in the right direction. And it's not that there's negative things out there. It's that we can do better. And we can do better as a community than we've done in the past. We've seen that, you know, the things we're doing tonight, speed surveys that are decade old, we can do better. Our community deserves better. Our neighborhoods deserve better and we as a city deserve better. And that's, that's kind of where the mayor is headed with all these things. These, these are not new issues. These are things that we're, we're doing better at. And so that when we're done here, this is a better community in a whole. So anyway, thank you. And I appreciate your, your positive comments. And with that, is there any, the lieutenant has something? And then the chief, do you have anything to say, chief?
Yeah, um, just a quick, quick two things. First, as most people do, uh, when they're young, they wander through life, wondering about the road not taken and, uh, choices that have been made. And Mr. Henderson, Henderson, if I would have had you at a critical intersection at a point in my life about what my future really should look like, I, I may take you up on your offer when I'm done with this job and I will get into the home staging and decorative business. Um, I'm going to need some, some wardrobe tips because that's going to require a whole new wardrobe on my half. But, um, something I'm going to consider and I appreciate you commenting that twice now. Thank you. Um, but seriously, on the fireworks thing, just to remind folks that fireworks are not permitted in the city except on the Fourth of July. I know we start selling them a few days before, uh, but it's only on that fourth. So this, this year, it's Thursday that, that they can do it between 12 and I think it's 10 o'clock at night. So, uh, we are going to have fire marshals riding along with us in the units. Uh, we'll have a unit dedicated specifically to firework patrols. So, um, hope we don't run into you, but, uh, but if we do, it's, it's for a good reason. So we just want to make sure everybody stays safe. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for attending. Uh, ones of the, you that attended the rib cutting, the ribbon cutting for the headquarters, uh, it was greatly appreciated. Uh, we really do appreciate the support. Uh, we couldn't do without all of our mutual benefit of the cities that we cover. The other thing along with Lieutenant Lane with the fireworks, we will have multiple units out on patrol as well. We have a great collaborative effort with our sheriff, uh, partners. And, um, we do also on sbcfire.org have a way to report fireworks. But like you said, um, it's just a reporting, um, tool so that we can help and send to our investigators and our prevention officers along with our SO officers to, uh, go in and investigate. Um, but we do have to physically see and there are, and there are laws associated with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. So closed session, none. Um, remember, before we adjourn, we're, this meeting is in the honor of Ronald Barnett and, uh, God bless the family and, you know, prayers for your comfort. And, you know, thank you for, uh, sharing him with the city of Grand Terrace and everything he has done. And, uh, it's always a solemn reminder, you know, when we, we have, uh, people that get called to the Lord from this little city, you know, because this little city knows a lot of people. And it really affects us, you know, and, uh, and it's sad, you know, but, you know, just we could keep comfort and faith in our Lord and then know he's in a better place. But we do miss him and the family does miss him. And, you know, just prayers for your, your comfort. And happy Independence Day, everybody. I mean, I bought my tie, what was it? Sassy Christie, that's her name? I don't know. During our Blue Mountain Festival. So if you want some really cool ties and really cool stuff, you know, make sure you go to these festivals and you buy it. Um, I have that and a Jaws tie. I don't know what next, but I guess Veterans Day and everything else. Thanksgiving, I'll have a turkey drumstick on there or something. I don't know. But, you know, thank you for my fellow council members for doing such a good job. And thank you, the city. And thank Christine for a balanced budget. Thank you, Sheriff's Department. You know, and I think what can, he needs for that to make it relaxing, like a wooden wallpaper, fireplace, bearskin rug, you know, make it like a, a hunting lodge or something. I don't know, but.
I've, I've got ideas already. I'm, I'm already on.
I got some fish we can hang on the wall too. So, and, uh, and hopefully we won't have any fires and you guys will have a nice, relaxing night. And, uh, thank you, everybody. Our meeting's going to be adjourned till, our next one will be held Tuesday, July 9th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Any requests to have an item placed on future agenda must be made and written and submitted to the city clerk. So God bless and happy Fourth of July.